Okay, let's start off with the resolutions. We have Resolution 2425-146, Resolution Adopting Minutes, Public Hearing Minutes from the last council meeting. It's pretty self-explanatory. Resolution 2025-147, Resolution to Award Plumbing Contract for South Side Realm Improvements, Alderman Marticello.
Dan?
Yes?
This is you?
It's personally me, mostly Mike. But yes.
Just the last bid, okay? It's the lowest bid. It says, "Rampage will now be resolved at the plumbing contract award to Templeston and Son, for the honor for $350 worth." This is the last contract, the last bid, so now we're ready to proceed after you decide this.
Any questions? Resolution 2425-148, Resolution Reappointing Member to the Capital Region Land Bank Board of Directors by Mayor Sinquani. Obviously, Mayor Sinquani is on vacation. It's for Robert Martin, 104 Henry at a Boulevard. I don't know Robert myself. Any of you guys know him?
He's reappointed.
This is...
Contractor.
Okay, so he's reappointed.
Your constituent.
I know, I don't know.
I do. He's been reappointed, he's been on the board for a long time. He's a painter, contractor.
He's also on the AHA, the Housing Board, too.
He's very well respected in the city.
So Resolution 2425-149, Resolution Reappointing Member to the Planning Commission, David Morrow. Any questions on David? It's reappointment.
My constituent, so I'll move it.
David is also a good member of the board. You're gonna move it?
Yeah.
But these are all reappointments.
Right. Yes.
Resolution 2425-150, Resolution Reappointing Member to the Planning Board, Sonic. I always pronounce your last name wrong. Do you want to move it, Irene?
Yeah, he's being reappointed also.
Resolution 2425-151, Resolution Budget Transfer Reimburse Chips Program for Lion Street Paving, Alderman Holiday.
Yep, just moving some funds around from that big job that Mike and his crew did on Lion Street down there a few months back. It's all up, so.
Mike, do you have anything you want to add?
No, it's just that the only thing I would add is that we originally had paid for it out of chips. And I want to reimburse the chips fund out of the sewer contingency mainly because we needed every penny we had in chips this year because of the additional work we got to do more work, which is significantly more than expected. It, you know, it's tomato, tomato when you want it come strong, but it just seems clear to include all of that as part of the project and not part of the paving program. So that was my thinking.
Anybody have any questions? Resolution 2425-152, Resolution Authorizing Agreement with New York State Office of Community Renewal for the Home Funded Owner Program, Occupied Rehab Program by Meet Housing Trust Fund Corporation and the Office of Community Renewal awarded the city $750,000 for New York State Home Local Program. Dan, do you have anything you want to add to it?
I think it's pretty much here. Anybody have any questions, I certainly can answer them, but it's a good program, it helps low to moderate income families fix the houses.
What is the income level?
It's a sliding scale depending on the size of the household. I don't have it off the top of my head, but I certainly can send it if you won't see it.
Wrong, 26,000.
Thank you, Jimmy.
Single fib, south one.
Resolution 2425-153, Resolution Authorizing Agreement with New York State Office of Community Renewal for the Community Development Block Grant Funded Lead Line Lateral Replacement Program Renewal awarded to the City of Amsterdam to the amount of $1.5 million. Dan, do you want to add anything about this? And maybe Mike, but Dan?
Again, it's going to be targeting low to moderate income households who have leadlines. Mike and his team have done a good job getting the inventory started, so we have listed potential residents who might benefit from this.
The only thing I would add is that based on the amount of money we've got, our last project was confirmed by the EPA that the numbers are spot on in terms of the average cost of total service and about $10,000 service. So it's a big number. It's three times what we did in the early two years ago.
Any questions for Mike? Resolution 2425-154, Resolution Budget Transfer, Information Technology Budget, Alderman Collins will explain.
Louise will.
Louise will. Excuse me.
So this is no additional cost to the budget, we're just shuffling some funds around within the money that we budgeted in the IT department. It was actually a newly created department in this year's budget. We didn't end up, we did, we funded this budget at the very minimum level, not sure if we were really, we were going to fill the position or not, and we were able to successfully fill the position, but we're not going to need all this money that we put in the salary line. So we're going to move some of that to materials and supplies and contractual expense lines for sort of like seed money to get some, you know, projects, much needed projects started and funded.
Any questions for Louise? Resolution 2425-155, Resolution Waiving Late Fees Due Pursuit, Section 156-S6 of the Amsterdam City Code as it relates to 6872 and 78 Ford Street. We need to amend this to 6872 and 76. This, these fees were issued to the owner, but the parcel, of the parcel, and he lives in a adjoining county. So Louise, we're just refunding him that fee, right? Louise, we're just refunding him that fee?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, 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 he was, the fees were assessed in error.
It was in error.
The owner does live in a Conroy County.
The same owner for all three? Same owner for all three?
Yes.
I got a question.
Sure.
On these, we've been receiving, Louise, money, checks coming in to the clerk's office. Some people are paying, other people are, as such, in this case, are not. What do you advise that we do for this point going forward with the registry program?
Well, we're not sending out any new registration forms at this point in time, but we're not expecting this to last long. We've been meeting regularly and hope to have a plan in place very, very soon to start to resume these. But, you know, everybody that registered was required to register and will continue to need to register, you know, so nothing's really changing. And if they were assessed any fees in the past penalties, you know, they would still owe those. We just have, just put a pause on sending out any new invoices or registration forms until we get a new process.
If I can add on to that, when the time is right, which I was just, Louise just emailed me this afternoon about their latest meeting, and the questions that she had, I think we can pull all of those things, is the short of it. So I think that we could have legislation ready to introduce as early as the next meeting. But part of the legislation to be drafted will, will have a rollout of the new program with deadlines for the first batch, and then it's going to be annually after that. But we need to deal with the rollout of it in '25.
A few people called me up. One was the Amsterdam housing authority. You aware of that one?
I am.
Okay. You're aware of that one, too, right? Did we reimburse him yet?
I don't believe so. I mean, did we do a resolution for that?
No.
No. I have not...
We're gonna have an executive session about it, but I had COVID, so I don't think it happened, right?
Well, that's why I brought it up. I know, I was gonna bring it up now because you didn't bring it up before. And that's, that was in my ward, and Morris talked to me about that.
Yeah.
And she asked me when we're gonna bring that up and we're gonna talk about it, because it's a substantial large amount of money. So, and I will bring up a resolution to reimburse it, I don't have a problem with that. That's our view.
It's certainly okay with me.
You're very anxious to resolve this. We are getting a lot of calls, and we're very anxious to...
Okay, so then you come to, Tony, would you look into that, about that resolution? Are you aware of it?
You want to sponsor it, Jimmy?
Yeah, I'll sponsor it. I thought, thank you.
I mean, to be clear, I mean, I don't want to weigh in on any parcel reimbursement specifically. I think that's up to you folks. But if that's what you want done, then I'll draft it happily for you.
Thank you. No problem. All right.
Resolution 2425-156, Resolution Authorizing Contract with Gallagher Benefit Services, Alderman Holiday.
Yeah, pretty straightforward. Gallagher approached us and gave us a pretty decent offer. It's gonna save us about $60,000 a year locked into a three-year contract. I was gonna throw it over to the mayor for some color on this one, but I guess, Louise, if you want to add anything, we had, we did have a nice meeting, Alderman Carpenter and I and everyone, and they kind of filled us in on everything that you guys were going through and whatnot, and what prompted the change. So if you wanted to embellish or elaborate, I mean, go ahead.
I'd be to speak briefly on the subject. I mean, this was certainly not a decision that we made hastily. A lot of months of research and meetings and conversations and questions were involved in aligning at this, at this recommendation. But it's just ultimately a decision that we really do believe, this is a committee that I was part of and that included the mayor, we really do think this is, this move is in the city's best interest and definitely in our employees' best interest.
And just to clarify, you said Gallagher approached us, but I think what, it was you reached out to a few different, you had presentations from a few different insurance brokers?
We reached out to a number of brokers, four other brokers, yes, including our current broker. We had the same, you know, conversations with all of them and, you know, the follow-up meetings, and yeah, we gathered a lot of information, a lot of facts, and yes, we did not, they did not approach us.
Yeah. Sorry, I'm throwing that away there with that.
Yeah, I just, yeah, I kind of want to just find out what it was.
For clarifying, yeah.
Various, yeah, but yeah, you...
So this is always good to make multiple quotes.
Right, we saw quotes.
Yeah. It's a $175,000 contract. Currently, we're going to $110,000, and that $110,000 is locked in at $110,000 for three years. And one of the, you know, one of the benefits of this particular company is that, you know, our employees get to take stock in the ownership of the insurance company because they have a task force that they're forming, which will allow a lot of, some of the city employees to be part of that, so they can have conversations concerning their insurance company and let the broker know what challenges they have, so it gives them some sense of ownership in it. That's cool. Does anybody have any questions concerning this? I know that we've all talked about this a lot.
Did you reach out to any other people on property and casualty? Did you?
No.
You?
I spoke to Louise and Kim Brumley about it, and we are supposed to be meeting with Gallagher for property and casualty to discuss that. Tomorrow, Rich and I are meeting with, I'm pronouncing this right, Matt Vabadi?
You're saying it right, yes?
And we're going to...
Matt Vabadi is our present broker. He's not new.
I'm probably pronouncing this wrong, but as you were?
Am sure.
Am sure, okay. I used my French accent when I did that.
Okay.
You know.
Well, they are the present people.
Those distinguished.
But the people you met were the new people, right?
We just met.
We met together.
You met with the new people.
We did not meet with the Gallagher representative.
When you met with this insurance company right here, you met with Gallagher.
Louise, the mayor, Corlene, and Kim Brumley met with Gallagher. They were not present in the room when Rich and I had a meeting with the four of them.
Yeah, it was just us and the mayor and Louise.
We're not present when these new people made a presentation.
Yeah.
But you're gonna be present when the old people are gonna make a presentation, not the new people.
For the casualty?
Yeah.
Yeah, well, tomorrow is gonna be our conversation, you know, we'll see where it goes.
That's not the property casualty, though. So that's the Gallagher, the one that they're setting up for us with Gallagher, that's the representative that we can...
What were you meeting with to discuss that?
We're meeting with Am sure.
Or the existing. Or the existing broker for property casualty. They're the existing broker.
Correct.
And you're meeting with them?
Yes.
But you are gonna meet with somebody different?
We're gonna meet with Gallagher as well.
Okay.
Resolution 2425-157, Resolution Transferring Funds, Sewer Pump Station, Alderman Holiday.
Right, just moving money from the revenue line to the expense line here for some insurance funds that we got from NYMER. Mr. Clark, did you want to add anything to this? Anything special?
This is the West Side Pump Station. We filed a claim. This is not the entire claim. We have multiple pump areas within the space of a couple weeks back, oh, the end of summer. And this is just the, really, it's a cost that, it was the first part of the claim that we filed for, removal and repair of one of the pumps, but there is more to come back. We have a much bigger claim with them presently.
Any questions?
More coming down the pike.
Resolution 2425-158, Resolution Approving the Audit, Alderman Collins.
I'll do this, Mike.
We have an introduction, an Ordinance C of 2025, an ordinance modifying Amsterdam City Code, Section 228-17, parking prohibited at all times, public, this is about fire, people are not allowed to park in fire lane, Alderman Marticello.
This is self-explanatory.
It is. It's pretty self-explanatory.
No parking in the fire lane.
And we need to schedule, we need to schedule a time for that public hearing, so 5:58, I meant, 5:55, I meant there.
Sounds good. I do need to have an executive session at the end of the meeting regarding litigation, and I do anticipate action being taken by the council following the executive session.
Jimmy, was this not in the code, the fire lane? This is new? Or is this a modification?
Modified.
Okay.
No parking at all.
What was it before, just...
Chief?
It was not, it was absent from the code. So it left it up to, let's say, private business or a school or the hospital that would have a fire lane.
Sure.
We were beholden to them having their own on-campus rule, hey, no parking in the fire lane, and then we'd be relying on them to tow the car. Now it gives us enforcement abilities.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you, chief. We have one consent resolution, 2425-158, Resolution Budget Transfer, the remaining ARPA funds that we all sat in on and decided where the money goes, Alderman Collins.
Yeah, this is just some housekeeping.
Says Alderman Collins.
I know. Louise can explain it. Sure. We had to get the approval for, to spend our remaining ARPA funds. We had to get that taken care of before the end of the year, which we did, and this is just a housekeeping item to now make the adjustment in our, to our budget, formerly the funds.
We have 10 minutes before we start the meeting. Do you want to go over your controls, your engineers report, Mike?
Sure.
Does anybody have any questions?
Okay, we had, I had a meeting today with our street lighting contractor at NIPA. Part of that relationship where we're able to borrow and reduce our costs, switch to LED streetlights. At any rate, the update is for everyone, 1225 lights replaced the date. They have replaced a couple of the new ones that we've reported out since then, and they're working on that over the next day or two to get those cleaned up. Their target date for substantial completion is mid-April, and that is as precise as they would be. They're moving along. They have not done any on the south side. Right now, they're over in the, in the college streets and could be working their way towards the center of the city here and then to the south side. But again, if anybody sees any of the new streetlights, the newly replaced, and you notice that one's out, please just, you know, send me an email, call my office.
This, mid-April completion date, is that including the ones that were bad?
Oh, yeah. Well, here's the thing.
The new ones, yeah.
That project won't be, that project won't be filed out until, until all the punch list items are corrected as well. That's the same thing we do with every contract.
Okay.
You know, you get, and substantial completion is a term you'll hear me sling around on a regular basis. What that means is that it's a date we set in the contract where whatever we're building, whether it's a structure or a street or a series of demolitions, whatever that is, substantial completion means that that particular widget that we built is in service. Doesn't mean everything's perfect, it means it's 95% done. At that point, we do a walk-around, and you come up with a list of unfinished items or items that need to be addressed or touched up or what have you. That's called a punch list. We do the punch list, and when everybody, when the owner, the city, and the consultant agrees that that list has been completed, then we pay out the remaining, the remainder of the contract and wrap it up from there.
I think Rich had a question for you as well.
Sure. So regarding the streetlights, Chris, that we spoke about a little bit? Yeah, yeah, so listen, it might, it might sound pretty ignorant, but are we able to turn them up? I've heard through the grapevine that we can turn these up. Is that true or false?
My understanding is that these are, I hate to overuse this term, smart lights, just like everything else we have today.
Right.
We are, part of this, part of this design package and the whole replacement is, is they are all Wi-Fi connected, basically through the cell system. And we will have access to and be trained on, my office is going to be trained on how to use that software to, where we can go in and look at when there's a complainer, we can look at it on a daily basis, we can, and we're supposed to be able to adjust these lights to an extent. Now, having said that, I will say my suggestion, because we will get some of those concerns from residents initially, because they don't look the same, right? If you're, you know, it's because of the way that they project the light downward in a cone rather than scatter it, and, and along with the new, it's not new, but the effort today to reduce light pollution, they do look different, right? So folks, even if you're, if you're standing under them, that area that they're lighting up may be as bright or brighter than the old-time mercury vapor lamps. If you're back, you know, some, some person that has had their front yard lit up for 50 years by this one streetlight that was across the street, and all of a sudden it doesn't do that anymore, it doesn't mean they need to be turned up or down, but there's kind of a, there's a limit to what we can do. But back to your question, yeah, we're supposed to be able to have some ability to adjust the brightness on those lights. I mean, my understanding is there's essentially a dimmer switch in each one that we can access. How that's gonna work yet, I don't know. We're supposed to be trained on that software.
Do you, do you know, like, what the default setting is? Like, are we kind of in the middle?
That, that's to be determined, and to your point, I think what you're asking is where are they set right now? That's a good question.
Yeah.
That I don't know.
Because, you know, and it all stems from, you know, just, you know, in my ward, there's a few businesses right, right near the bridge there, Creekside area, right? It is, in their defense, too, it is very dark, and I've heard that as an issue.
You're talking about my Rockton and...
Yep, exactly, yeah.
We did talk about that recently, and I, that, that intersection is, even with new lighting, is, has been dark, and we need to do something different, so I raised that, I raised that issue in the meeting today, and we're gonna, we are gonna add a light there, we're gonna do it under a maintenance, the maintenance end of this contract.
Great.
This is not our normal construction contract. We, when it's all said and done and we've swapped over everything, now that the city owns the lights, we're going to all LED, we're gonna get them all replaced, when we get to that point in a couple of months, then we're gonna get trained on the, how to use the software, how to identify lights that are out and report them, and then call for maintenance, how to adjust the brightness, so on and so forth. With that also goes a maintenance contract and an access to a lighting contractor that does those kind of things. When we, when we get to the end of the installation, the switch over, we're going to order that light to be installed under that, under that maintenance contract. The reason for that is the lead time to get a work order in with National Bridge, even though they don't own the streetlights, they still own the power transmission. So there's, there's a request process that we have to go through to get that approved, so there's, we can pull a lead in the service off of that power for that particular light.
Sure.
But that's long-winded, but, which I'm good at, but...
It's good information.
The light's gonna be there.
Cool. Would see, if you had to just throw a dart at a board and take a month, are we talking like a three-month process, or?
I honestly don't know.
Yeah.
It's, I'm gonna tell you, anytime we do anything like this, it's six weeks to two months before you, before things get rolling, when they, it's just their own internal process.
Sure.
But I would expect to see it shortly after we complete the changeover of all the existing lights.
It's good. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Mike, we got two minutes. Do you want to hit the next paragraph? About the chips.
I, well, let's see. Yeah, I mean, I've got a bunch of things. I mentioned just before, you're gonna see that I'm almost done with the draft list. I don't have it completed yet. Also, we talked about the CBEG, funding for the streetlight project. This is a holdover item, but it's interesting enough that I want to keep it in the forefront of people's minds. And lastly, before we're done here, I have scheduled a pre-construction meeting for the Gulf Course Clubhouse, February 26th, which is what, next week, next Monday, which is essentially the start of the construction. That's when we, we get the, all the contracts, contracts together, we talk about all the procedures.
That's when again, Mike?
Pardon?
That's when again? What's the?
February 26th. That's usually...
Done, remember.
Thank you. The idea is, we meet with all the contractors, establish all the contact information, everybody, talk about roles and responsibilities, how they apply for payment, all the safety information, project schedules, we do all of that at that time. And at the end of it, the idea is, we, we, the owner, then, then engineer issue what's called a notice to proceed, which means that they are then told that you can go ahead, everything's in place, the contracts are in place, the bonds and insurances are in place, you can proceed, and the contract time starts ticking. Remember, if they, whether they start it two months ago or whether they start on the 26th, our substantial completion date on this project, you just talked about substantial completion, that is still August 1st.
Okay.
So, and that's not moving.
Let's call the meeting order. Everybody rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, and to the citizens of this one nation, under our individual liberty and justice.
Stacy, call the roll, please.
Alderwoman Questa Mars.
Here.
Alderman Holiday.
Here.
Alderwoman Collins.
Here.
Alderman Carpenter.
Here.
Alderman Marticello.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the agenda, 13 resolutions, one consent resolution and one introduction.
Alderman Carpenter.
Aye, here.
Alderman Marticello.
Aye.
Alderwoman Questa Mars.
Aye.
Alderman Holiday.
Aye.
Alderwoman Collins.
Aye.
We have no proclamations this evening. We have no communication or presentations. Time for public participation. Would anybody in the public like to get up and speak? We have five minutes.
This is what we brought you here for, see? I'm just kidding.
You're welcome to get up and say something. You're welcome to get up and say something.
Tell us about your dad.
Sure. Okay, no, no public comment. Uh, Mike, if you'd like to finish your engineer's report?
That was, uh, that was the meat of it.
Okay.
Uh, the only, only thing I would add is that I will be replacing that pressure-reducing valve on the antenna that you've heard about for too long now, just as soon as we can get anywhere near 30 degrees.
So, moving on to the controllers' report. Luis?
I'm gonna pass out a summarized controller's report that includes seven months of actual spending. Um, all our operating funds are in good shape. You'll see that in most cases. Our revenue is exceeding our expenditures. I've also included our current contingency balances. They're all pretty healthy, but this is the, you know, and coming into the months now where we start using that if we need it. Um, but everything looks, uh, pretty good.
Does anybody have any questions for Luis?
Luis, go ahead.
I have no questions.
Jimmy?
Let me, I want to explain that golf. I just don't quite understand the golf fund one more time. Revenue is for six months, $350,000. So as of January 31st, so you're counting from July 1, that's the budget, to now, right?
Right. We, we budget for our fiscal year, um, which is not ideal for a golf course because they're, I mean, they're just, it's obviously a seasonal operation, and half of their revenue generating, um, season is in one fiscal year and half is in the other. So it is really hard to kind of.
So really, last year's April, May, June, three, so three months of revenue last year is not included here.
Right, but it will be included this year. Once the golf course opens, hopefully in March, then March, April, May, and June revenue will get, you know, added to that, um, and that'll hopefully bounce out.
I don't remember, this is the problem I have. I don't remember budgeting one month, $1.2 million on a golf course. I don't remember that. I don't remember. I remember $900,000, but I don't remember.
Well, we put the, um, there was about $340,000 in additional state aid that we have, we put in that budget, um, for the new golf court clubhouse if we needed. Um, but that's why, it's usually around a $900,000 budget. That's the number that probably comes, seems more familiar to you. But it's because we added some extra New York state aid there with a view to using it, uh, to, you know, help equip the new golf clubhouse. That's why that's so much higher than it usually is.
Then, if that's the case, the new clubhouse, which is 1. Mike, 2,007, 2,007?
$2,080,000.
It's $2,070,000, right?
Yeah, 2.08, that's the number.
So where is that gonna be, where is that gonna reflect in the golf one right here?
That's, that's not part of this. That's not included here. This is, this is, um.
The 300,000 is?
Well, the 300,000, we don't know necessarily that it's, how we're gonna use that. We just have it parked there so that we keep our options open. Um, I mean, we're borrowing money. We've got grant money that we've been, um, that's been permitted to build the building, but, you know, there are likely to be things that we need to purchase for the inside of the building that are not covered by that contract, you know, the construction contract. So we just thought it was, you know, best to just leave that, you know, spreading contingency.
Well, this is what's gonna, contingency can't be, because the contingency's only got 340,000.
That's it.
Okay, so where is the 2,070,000? A million of that is?
Well, that's not part of the operating budget. That's gonna go into a capital project.
Yeah, we don't, see, that, that was confusing. See, it's not here, so that throws.
But none of our projects are captured in this report. I mean, you know, like the CHIPS, road programming, that's not here either. That's, all the projects are excluded from this report.
So when somebody sits down in the coffee shop tomorrow morning, they're gonna say, where's the $2 million? Where you gonna tell, where should I tell them where that is? $1 million, I do know, is in, uh, we bonded for. And then everything else is on the grant money, right?
Right.
Where you, where you?
You don't actually have any of the funds in our possession yet. I mean, we've, we've got the borrowing that is underway right now. We'll have those. We try not to borrow too far ahead of time because we pay interest on the, the fund, so we don't, we time it so that we don't get the money, uh, the loan until we actually need it. And, you know, the grants are probably reimbursement grants. I'm guessing, I don't know that a lot of them are. You spend the money and then get reimbursed later. So we don't have any of the funds in our possession, yeah.
So Mike, and you're gonna discuss this, this is what brings all this discussion, that he's gonna have a discussion February 26th for all these people, and you are gonna discuss on how you're gonna pay for the golf course. Am I right? With these people, and how we're gonna pay them, and why we're gonna pay them?
I discuss when they have to. I, I don't get into our, our, our capital project funding with any contract.
So how do you pay them? Do they get paid X amount of money upfront?
No, they get paid based on the percentage complete, uh, uh, of work. When they, these are all lump-sum contracts. What they'll do is, generally monthly, they're gonna submit, submit an application for payment, not just an invoice. It's a specific form that I want to see that shows percent complete based on their schedule values, where all their lump-sum bid is broken out, and I can look at it and say, yes, you've done this, 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 and this, and that, that totals up to $52,000 for this month, or whatever that number is, depending on the contract. And then, if we agree with those items they submitted on, then that's what they're eligible for. Minus 5% because we hold back retainage. And so to Luis's point, we, we're gonna have a million dollars to start this. That's what we're gonna be, initially, that's what we're gonna be paying these folks out of. They always, you know, and that work is gonna start out, I won't say slow, but there'll be, the, the first application for payment will be not huge. Probably the second won't be either. By the time we get to the third one in May, it's gonna be a substantial number, because it has to be, because they've got, you're, you might see several hundred thousand. I expect to see several hundred thousand in the month of May and June, just to get this project done on time.
Okay, and we bonded that $1 million. Do you have that money?
Well, we're in the process of bonding it right now.
Yeah, I know. We passed a resolution a month ago on that, right?
Yeah.
Okay, and the last thing. I gotta satisfy my friend JoJo. He's been asking me questions. Is there a, if they're not built, if it's not done by August 1, is there a retainer, is there a?
I have liquidated damages in all the contracts.
You what?
I have liquidated damages written into all the contracts.
Liquid, liquid.
I don't see clauses.
I know what you, I know what you mean. Is there a percentage?
It's a, it's a per day.
Per day. So you do have that?
I, there are liquidated damages in all four contracts.
Okay, thank you. All right. Okay, thank you very much. Okay?
All right. And, buddy, have anything else for Luis?
Thank you.
All right, old business. There is none. Um, although, um, I did send some of you an email, or a text message today about a possible meeting with state DOT officials concerning.
How you're ignoring, you can email.
No, it's okay. Um, it's, we just need to schedule it so the DOT, so we can get state officials here. So there's, there's three dates. I think the preferred date is the 27th. Um, Jimmy and I are, are on board that day, but Mike would like to have it as a council meeting, so we can all hear what the state representatives have to say. Um, so if you can enter that text and pick a date.
It was Thursday the 27th at like 10:00 AM?
Yes.
Okay.
So that's, it's really not old business on here, but it's just something that I wanted to bring up because I know that we need to make that meeting.
I don't think I'm on those emails. Does that mean you don't want me there? Which is okay. That's okay.
No, no. Um, my apologies.
If you do, I need to.
No.
If you want me in. Oh, you don't, you don't want me?
No, maybe not. Sure, yes. It's a council meeting, so yes.
Then when are we talking about?
February 20th. Well, there's three options. There's February 27th at 10:00 AM.
So move.
Um, those are March 6th and March 7th.
Thank you, Kelly.
March 6th at 1:30, March 7th at 9:00 AM.
And each of those are projected not to last more, not to last more than an hour.
Right.
Uh, if it's March 6th, anytime in the morning, anytime on March 7th works, and February 27th, what?
10:00 AM.
10:00 AM. I think that's the preferred date. Uh, that's the date Mike had chosen.
I probably am gonna have a problem with that, at least being timely for that.
Well, it's not necessary for you to be here. I don't believe so.
Not necessary. No, it's not necessary for you to be here.
Right.
Okay. If there's any way to do it later that day, or on one of those other two days, I can be here.
All right, well, we'll wait for everybody else, and then I'll let you know.
I can always be available by phone.
Okay, sounds good. Okay, moving on to resolutions.
Resolution 2425-146, resolution adopting minutes and the public hearing minutes from the last common council meeting by Alderman Carpenter.
So moved. Any questions? Call the roll, please.
Alderman Carpenter.
Aye.
Alderman Marticello.
Aye.
Alderwoman Quest Mars.
Aye.
Alderman Holliday.
Aye.
Alderwoman Collins.
Aye.
Resolution 2425-147, resolution to award plumbing contract for South Side Realm Improvement Boardwalk Project by Alderman Marticello.
So moved. This moved in now therefore be resolved.
Now therefore be it resolved that the plumbing contract is awarded to A Trifasen and Son LLC of Oneana, New York for $351,700.
So moved. Any questions? Call the roll.
Alderman Marticello.
Aye.
Alderwoman Quest Mars.
Aye.
Alderman Holliday.
Aye.
Alderwoman Collins.
Aye.
Alderman Carpenter.
Aye.
Resolution 2425-148, resolution reappointing member to the Capital Region Land Bank Board of Directors.
Should we get down to the?
It's resolved now.
Yes. The following individual is hereby reappointed to the Land Bank, Land Bank Board of Directors effective immediately with a term expiring June 2nd, 2027. Robert Martin, 104 Henrianna Boulevard, Amsterdam, New York, 12010.
So moved.
Alderwoman Collins.
Aye.
Alderman Carpenter.
Aye.
Alderman Marticello.
Aye.
Alderwoman Quest Mars.
Aye.
Alderman Holliday.
Aye.
Resolution 2425-149, resolution reappointing member to the Planning Commission by Mayor San Quanti.
Kelly's come in.
Um, by Alderwoman Quest Mars. Whereas a planning commission member's term has expired, therefore be it resolved, the, the following individual is hereby reappointed to the City of Amsterdam Planning Commission effective immediately with a term expiring December 31st, 2029. David Morrow, 50 Coolidge Road, Amsterdam, New York, 12010.
So moved. Any discussion? Call the roll.
Alderwoman Quest Mars.
Aye.
Alderman Holliday.
Aye.
Alderwoman Collins.
Aye.
Alderman Carpenter.
Aye.
Alderman Marticello.
Aye.
Resolution 2425-150, resolution reappointing member to the Planning Commission by Alderwoman Collins.
Can read the resolve.
The following individual is hereby reappointed to the City of Amsterdam Planning Commission effective immediately with a term expiring December 31st, 2029. Sonic Gravina, 344 Guy Park Avenue, Amsterdam, New York, 12010.
So moved. Any discussion? Call the roll.
Alderwoman Collins.
Aye.
Alderman Carpenter.
Aye.
Alderman Marticello.
Aye.
Alderwoman Quest Mars.
Aye.
Alderman Holliday.
Aye.
Resolution 2425-151, resolution 2424-25, budget transfer reimburse CHIPS program for Lyon Street paving by Alderman Holliday. Whereas the City of Amsterdam funds its annual street paving program via multiple CHIPS funding sources administered through the New York State Department of Transportation, and whereas the city performed emergency work to improve the storm and sanitary sewers of Lyon Street in 2024, requiring a complete rebuild of approximately 400 feet of street, including pavement.
That's perfect. So moved. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Alderman Holliday.
Aye, sorry.
Alderwoman Collins.
I thought it was mine.
Alderwoman Collins.
Aye.
Alderman Carpenter.
Aye.
Alderman Marticello.
Aye.
Alderwoman Quest Mars.
Aye.
Resolution 2425-152, resolution authorizing agreement with the New York State Office of Community Renewal for the Home Funded Owner Occupied Rehab Program by Alderman Carpenter.
So moved. Any questions? Call the roll.
Alderman Carpenter.
Aye.
Alderman Marticello.
Aye.
Alderwoman Quest Mars.
Aye.
Alderman Holliday.
Aye.
Alderwoman Collins.
Aye.
Resolution 2425-153, resolution authorizing agreement with New York State Office of Community Renewal for the Community Development Block Grant, CDBG-funded deadline, or leadline, lateral replacement program by Alderman Carpenter.
Read the first words, please.
Whereas on December 12th, 2024, the Housing Trust Fund Corporation and the Office of Community Renewal awarded the City of Amsterdam $1,500,000 of New York State Community Development Block Grant, CDBG, funding.
So moved. Any questions? Call the roll, please.
Alderman Carpenter.
Aye.
Alderman Marticello.
Aye.
Alderwoman Quest Mars.
Aye.
Alderman Holliday.
Aye.
Alderwoman Collins.
Aye.
Resolution 2425-154, resolution budget transfer information technology budget by Alderwoman Collins. Whereas the city hired a director of information technology who began employment on February 3rd. Whereas the city incurred additional IT consulting expenses prior to February 3rd to help resolve internet connectivity issues at the sewer and water plants.
So you can go down to the resolve.
The controller is authorized to make the following 2024/25 budget transfer. Decrease expense data processing personnel, $30,000. Increase expense materials and supplies, $10,000. Contractual expense, $20,000.
So moved. Any discussion? Call the roll.
Alderwoman Collins.
Aye.
Alderman Carpenter.
Aye.
Alderman Marticello.
Aye.
Alderwoman Quest Mars.
Aye.
Alderman Holliday.
Aye.
Resolution 2425-155, resolution waiving late fees due pursuant to Section 156-6 of the Amsterdam City Code as it relates to 6872 and 78 Ford Street by Alderman Carpenter.
I need, I need to make a motion to amend this, this resolution. Um, the date, the House number's incorrect. We have 6872 and 78 on the resolution. It's actually 6872 and 76. So I'd like to make a motion to amend this resolution.
On motion, take the call roll, please.
Alderman Carpenter.
Aye.
Alderman Marticello.
Aye.
Alderwoman Quest Mars.
Aye.
Alderman Holliday.
Aye.
Alderwoman Collins.
Aye.
Read the first two whereas. Oh, no, no, no. Resolution as amended. Resolution as amended. Thank you, Jimmy.
Well, you know, but you want her to read it, though.
Yes.
Yeah, so she can read it.
You said the first whereas?
Read, read the whole thing, please.
Okay. The owner of three Ford Street properties having previously been invoiced for $210 late fees for failing to comply with Chapter 156 of the Amsterdam City Code, said fees being codified in Section 156-6, and whereas the fees were erroneously issued as the owner of the parcel lives in a contiguous county in Montgomery County and has filed their designated resident agent paperwork, and whereas the common council being desirous to waive any fees due pursuant, due pursuant to Chapter 156 as it pertains to the subject parcel. Now therefore be it resolved that any fees for failing to comply with Chapter 156 are hereby waived as it applies to the subject parcel.
So moved. Any questions? Call the roll, please.
Alderman Carpenter.
Aye.
Alderman Marticello.
Aye.
Alderwoman Quest Mars.
Aye.
Alderman Holliday.
Aye.
Alderwoman Collins.
Aye.
Resolution 2425-156, resolution authorizing contract with Gallagher Benefit Services, Inc. by Alderman Holliday.
Um, can you please just read the first and the third whereas?
Yes.
Thank you.
The City of Amsterdam is desirous to enter into a three-year contract effective April 1st, 2025 with Gallagher Benefit Services, Inc., and whereas a copy of the three-year contract being attached hereto, with the cost to the city being as set forth in schedule And whereas a copy of the three-year contract being attached hereto with the cost to the city being as set forth in schedule B of the contract, generally being one hundred and ten thousand dollars per year plus certain commissions.
Uh, so moved. Any questions?
And what are certain commissions?
Uh, they're listed out.
Any questions, Jim?
No.
No, it was, uh, they were a twenty thousand dollar commission that Marshawn Sterling was getting that now Gallagher is entitled to.
Then why isn't that out here?
Uh, because the commissions change and you couldn't narrow it down to one dollar a month.
Then shouldn't it be not to succeed?
Um, I think I'll leave that question for Mr. Sal.
Are you gonna save an open checkbook to commissions?
No.
We don't pay the commissions.
We don't pay the commissions.
Right, so why, why are you putting it in here?
Just in the interest of like transparency and full disclosure.
And I believe it's.
If it's not part of what we have to pay, then why is it in here?
Hold on a moment.
I mean, can we, we can.
Can we strike it out?
No, it's part of the agreement. You can't strike it out. I just need the technology to work. We're clicking on download. It's not cooperating. Let me try with the. All right. Let's see, for Medicare Advantage Anthem Commission Standard Scale Dental, Delta Dental, Delta Dental Standard Scale Commission, Vision Anthem Standard Scale Commission, Accident and Cancer, Aflac, three percent of premium per month. Those are the four commissions referenced in the contract.
Do we need to amend the resolution for certain verbiage?
No, I mean, this gets back, if, if I ca, if I may, this is back to our conversation last week, the last meeting, about the council wanting to know the contract price in the contr, in the resolution. And I said, well, I can envision there'd be some times where that would be complicated to do. This is one such instance because the, the, the down to the penny line is not spelled out within the contract. So it's hard to explain what the exact cost of it's going to be. I'd have to defer to Louise to give you a more precise estimate, estimate. Uh, but, but nevertheless, you know, I put in the detail as much as I could saying that it's a three-year contract of one hundred and ten for three years, plus these four commissions.
And those commissions are probably a moving target, too, so you can't really put.
They're all different.
Right.
So, so it's not, it's not a lack of wanting to put contract prices in there. Sometimes it's just make, it's, it's very difficult.
Tony, I'll make this easy. Being a hundred and ten thousand dollars per year, that's what we're paying them. Are we paying them anything else other than that?
Commissions.
You just said we don't pay the commissions.
No, there are four commissions that are part of the contract. I'll just write them to you.
Someone said we don't, but I, I thought Louise just said that the, that the, we don't pay the. And it doesn't come out of our pocket.
We don't pay them directly. The Anthem, the, the only significant one honestly on the four is Anthem, our Medicare Advantage Plan. Delta Dental, Aflac, those are negligible amounts, but.
How much?
It's a, uh, maybe a few hundred a year. And those are based on, cause employees can opt in or out of those.
Well, my question, I want to ask this question because we're saving, we're going from X, what we paid before, to what we're paying now. All right? So somebody can come in here and say, they're gonna sell us the building goods for a hundred and ten thousand dollars. Then we find out later when we do the budget, we have to budget another twenty thousand, another thirty thousand, and I'm gonna ask where that come from. Then you're gonna tell me it's in the resolution, which is not in the resolution. So I'm gonna say, where did that twenty thousand come from? Then you're gonna come back and tell me, oh, it was done by certain commissions that were paid.
No.
And I don't have, that's not true?
I, I think what I'm trying to say.
Because two people are saying two different things there.
Yep, there's four commissions, uh, based the way I'm reading this, the Medicare Commission for Anthem, for Medicare Commission, Medicare Advantage Commission, if applicable, would be paid by Anthem.
Okay, so it's not come out of our pocket?
The Delta Dental.
It's just transferring it from one broker record to another.
Delta, Vision, the Standard Scale Commission, if applicable, would be paid by Anthem. And Accident and Cancer, uh, would be paid by Aflac. Uh, that's the three percent one.
Do we pay, do we pay?
It's hard to codify how much the total contract is for.
Do we pay Marshall and Sterling this?
No, they get it, they, they get paid by Anthem.
They get the same commission.
They are getting the same commission right now.
They're paid from the company.
It would just transfer from the current broker record to the new broker record.
It's very confusing.
So can we just say?
Yeah, the same thing. And I would draw my, uh, objection.
But that was good clarification on the last one.
We can't say that other commissions are paid by someone, by the other carriers.
That might be important for me to ask.
Certain commissions.
So I think.
Paid by.
See, there, there's, there's two questions. One can be definitively answered and one cannot be. Uh, the question is, how much will the city be spending is a hundred and ten thousand dollars per year for three years.
Right.
How much Gallagher will be making on this contract? I cannot answer that beyond what I put in the.
Not done necessarily, how much?
Beyond the way I drafted it.
Okay, so, uh, so moved. Right? Questions, anybody? Okay, it's call the roll.
Alderman Holiday.
Aye.
Alderwoman Collins.
Aye.
Alderman Carpenter.
Aye.
Alderman Marticello.
No.
Alderwoman Questa Mars.
Aye.
Excuse me.
Resolution twenty four, twenty five dash one fifty seven, resolution transferring fund sewer pump station by Alderman Holiday. Whereas the city has incurred significant expenses due to pump failures at the West Side Pump Station. Whereas the city submitted a claim to our insurance company in the fall of twenty twenty four for these failures. Whereas on February twelfth, twenty twenty five, the city received insurance funds from NYMIR in the amount of seventy seven thousand five hundred and seventy five dollars for expenses incurred thus far.
So moved. Um, any questions? Okay, call the roll. Thank you.
Alderman Holiday.
Aye.
Alderwoman Collins.
Aye.
Alderman Carpenter.
Aye.
Alderman Marticello.
Aye.
Alderwoman Questa Mars.
Aye.
Resolution, I'm sorry, resolution twenty four, twenty five dash one fifty eight, resolution approving audit by Alderwoman Collins.
So moved. Any questions? Call the roll.
Alderwoman Collins.
Aye.
Alderman Carpenter.
Aye.
Alderman Marticello.
Aye.
Alderwoman Questa Mars.
Aye.
Alderman Holiday.
Aye.
Resolution twenty four, twenty five dash one fifty eight, consent.
This would have to be one fifty nine. Uh, last one was one fifty eight. Uh, I don't think we need a motion. It's just housekeeping. But this would be resolution one fifty nine.
Got it. Okay, so resolution twenty four, twenty five dash one fifty nine, consent. Resolution budget transfer remaining ARPA funds by Alderwoman Collins. Whereas the city approved resolution number twenty four, twenty five dash one twelve on December twentieth, twenty twenty four, authorizing the city to obligate our remaining ARPA funds in accordance with federal compliance and reporting guidelines. Whereas a second resolution is needed to adjust the budget to reflect the approved changes.
So moved. Any questions? Call the roll.
Alderwoman Collins.
Aye.
Alderman Carpenter.
Aye.
Alderman Marticello.
Aye.
Alderwoman Questa Mars.
Aye.
Alderman Holiday.
Aye.
Ordinance.
I do. Ordinance C of twenty twenty five to be known as ordinance three of twenty twenty five, its adopted introduction. An ordinance modifying Amsterdam City Code section two twenty eight dash seventeen, schedule thirteen, parking prohibited at all times, by Alderman Marticello. Part one legislative intent, the intention of the instant ordinance is to modify section two twenty eight dash seventeen of the Amsterdam City Code to provide no parking at any time on any fire lane within the City of Amsterdam.
Thank you. That's fine. We'll have a public hearing in five fifty eight next time it comes to me.
Five fifty five.
Five fifty five.
Five fifty five.
Great. We can make a five fifty eight. We know we're good. Look at each other for five minutes. Five fifty eight.
Uh, if it's okay, I would ask for a motion at this time.
Yep.
Go into executive session under public policy of law, section one oh five, sub one, sub D, regarding discussions regarding proposed pending or current litigation.
To make a motion to go on executive session?
I do expect that the council will take action after the executive session, so go into public session and deal with that.
And we have a committee meeting.
Thank you, sir.
Call the rolls first. To go into executive session? Yes.
Um, Alderman Carpenter.
Aye.
Sweet.
Alderman Marticello. Alderwoman Questa Mars.
Aye.
Alderman Holiday.
Aye.
Alderwoman Collins.
Yeah.